Run at Bristol.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they put dirt down on the track, I guess, again, on asphalt.
Okay.
That'd be a show.
Yeah, they got like a ton of them coming. He said 1,100 cars signed.
Good Lord.
Over the whole time.
Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on Monday, December 28, 2020, at 6 o'clock. We'll start off our vacation. I'll ask Commissioner Morse if he'd like us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the many blessings you've given us. We ask for your strength and wisdom as we make decisions for the county tonight. We would ask that you bless those folks that are in need during the holiday season. We would ask that you bless those that are deployed throughout the world, both in the military and civilians who work for the United States government and are away from home. We would ask that you also bless those folks in long-term care and nursing homes who have been separated from their loved ones by the virus. And we would ask that as we go into 2021, you deliver us from the virus and help get things back to normal. These things we ask in your most gracious name. Amen.
Please continue standing for our pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start off the approval of the agenda.
Make motion to approve the agenda.
Exactly. Any comments? On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now move on to the comments from our commissioner and manager, and I'll start with Commissioner Cox.
Well, I wish I could get a look at all of you, but I'm in here with my grandkids and thank goodness for technology that I can be there this way. And I'm just kind of, I'm new at this, so just bear with me and hopefully it'll go smoothly.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Morse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome everybody that's here and maybe watching online, to include our commissioner. He's watching online. And hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and wished you a Happy New Year and, like I said in the prayer, a much better 2021 than we've had in 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, Commissioner Barnacass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like everybody's here, everybody's watching, same over Commissioner Morris. I hope everybody had a great Christmas and I hope we can get over this virus and get through this thing and just remember all of our citizens that has got the virus because the numbers just keep climbing while I'm here and wish you all the best.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Minaul.
Thank you, sir. I also want to echo what our former commissioners have each said. I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and I hope everyone has a Happy New Year. And if you're watching in on our live stream, I want to say to each one of you that I hope you have a great 2021 and we are looking forward to 2021 and getting this COVID-19 out of here. And each of you, I just say thank you for participating in our governmental process tonight and I'll pass it on to our chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys, for joining us tonight and hope we can get through this pretty quick and I hope everybody has a blessed night. Now moving on to our county manager, Mr. Oakley.
Mr. Chairman, four members, I hope everyone had a great Christmas. Hope that all of St. Canyon had a good Christmas and a 2021. Have the best year again. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We don't have no public comments, so I'll go ahead and ask for the approval of the casino agenda.
Come on.
Discussion. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, let's see, there's not any information agenda, so we'll move to discussion agenda. Item A, the Parkdale America Appeal. Mr. Richard Bream.
Yes, record time here. Won't slow us down any. Just happy to report to the board that we've come to a resolution on the Parkdale America Appeal. We've been going back and forth, Parkdale, for probably three and a half months now and kind of been hard to get information. Just want to briefly explain to the board what led up to this appeal. In 2011, DOR implemented a special textile depreciation schedule that changed the residual depreciation from 25% to 5%. In 2015, Parkdale appealed their business personal property value and at the time, Mr. Oakley was the tax administrator and Mr. Oakley and one of the personal property appraisers went down there and they settled on the appeal and went from 11.4 million to about 8.8 million dollars. Then in 2017, NC DOR phased out the special textile depreciation schedule. Stokes County continued to apply the residual through 25% through 2019 based upon the prior agreement made by the Stokes Tax Office in 2015. That was a five-year agreement. For tax year 2020, Stokes County, after the agreement ran out, chose to use the 25% residual. The textile industry as a whole has suffered over the last few decades. Parkdale America is no exception. Over the past several years, Parkdale's presence in North Carolina has declined from 12 plants to eight plants. And based on many conversations and emails with Parkdale's tax representative, BDO out of Texas, North Carolina Department of Revenue, and numerous counties across the state, we've reached a settlement and developed a hybrid of 15% for the residual. We feel like this is fair not only to the taxpayer but also to the county. Recommendation of the tax office is reduce the 2020 business personal property valuation from 11,451,981 to 8,408,485 and to continue to apply the hybrid residual schedule going forward. NC DOR allows us to do a hybrid based on the following language, a 5% residual for equipment acquired in 2009 and earlier remains applicable if deemed appropriate by the appraiser. The majority of Parkdale America's equipment was purchased in 2008. When we went down and toured the plant, the plant manager showed us the equipment, seemed to be running well, but he told us that a lot of the equipment was dated and that probably in the next few years for them to compete, they was going to have to upgrade their equipment. And when they do that, then, you know, we'll go back to full value and then it'll take about eight years for it to get back to the residual value. That's all I have.
Any questions, comments on that? Commissioner Morse.
Mr. Chairman, so when you went to the 15%, that's what produced the 8,408,485?
Correct.
Are they happy with 15%? They think it's fair?
They are. We went, we went back and forth with them and they were happy with that. That's the first offer we made because, like I said, we put a lot of time and effort into it and consulted with DOR and then consulted with DOR, they was tossing around 10%. I heard that figure a couple of times. And then talking to Lee County, Rowan County, Davison County, Gaston County, and Rockingham County, they all used the 5%. So, the only county that doesn't use 5% is Yadkin. They're still using 25, but a year, a year ago, two years ago, they negotiated down to 10% and for whatever reason, they took that off the table and went back to 25, but that, Yadkin is under appeal right now and we've been talking to them and they're probably going to settle on possibly the 15% also.
Do, did you make a long-term agreement with them or is this just for one year?
Well, what we did was we made the agreement that we would use this hybrid schedule going forward for the foreseeable future.
Until further notice?
To further notice, exactly.
Okay. But you have the discretion to do, did the DOR want you to use less, you said?
DOR?
How would they do that?
They left it up to us and they had negotiated back a couple of years ago with Yadkin and they negotiated a settlement of 10% with them.
Okay.
And, you know, I just felt like that if this, if this equipment is running and it's up and going, that, you know, we'll start off with 15 and they, they took that. And this, this equipment is hard to value because it's not like bagging a track hoe or something, you know, there's a lot of those around. This is specialized equipment just for this purpose, so that's why we had to cast a big net and go across the state to find some comparable.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with it if they are, it's just the, I just want to make sure everybody understands that we're business friendly here as much as we can be to keep them, keep them here, so.
Exactly, and we've, and we've done that.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I was going to say, Rich. Appreciate you working with these folks like you have because I can tell you, I've been in the textile business 43 years. I'm currently still working for a textile company and we've took a beating as well like they have, so it's great to see our county negotiating, working with them in every way they can because we went from 650 employees to 200. That's how bad we got here.
Absolutely. And Stokes County is, one of their, their plants is performing really good. Their plant manager said they're really performing good, so that's good. Hope they continue that.
Commissioner Minaul, do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good with this. Thank you, Richard, for the work you put into this. I, I know it was a tenuous process, but to make sure that both Stokes County and Parkdale both came out satisfied with where we're at, that's the main thing to me. Both parties came out and are happy.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cox, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I don't. Thank you. They already asked my questions.
Okay. Rich, appreciate you working on this. Sounded like everything's working out for the good on both ends and I'm fine with moving forward with this. Do you need this anytime soon?
I would, I would like if the board would, could do it, would move it to action tonight just for simple reason. I could contact them tomorrow when we get this closed out in the calendar year for accounting purposes.
Okay. Does the board get with that?
Get with it.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, do, put this as item B. All right, and C. C. All right. Move on to item B now, the salary study. Mr. Oakley.
Chairman, we have the final draft that's been done by Mercer Group and you will see in this study the new implementation cost to minimum and then you will also see the compression and you will also see the new salaries and stuff for, for the employees on the minimum and the mid-grade and the maximum. You'll also see the areas in here that Julia has worked on very much and how much the cost would be for the, to implement this and bringing everybody up to the minimum grade pay level. Also have the cost of four areas that are, that needs to be under contract, which is the sheriff, registered deeds, county manager, and economic development. You will see where Julia has feed that up, all of that cost is inside her overall thing out here. I am requesting that the board will consider moving forward with this. You also have your, your study that, that was submitted by Mr. Robson from the Mercer Group and it's got a, a final report, December 18th, and that's when we had worked with Mr. Robson and that dated some people, you know, people had to kind of move to different places or retired or went somewhere else. We got data to import. And, and we made sure that any tweaking that needs to be done on salary grades were done. So with that, we're here to answer any questions you may have on it. I wish Mr. Robson could have been here, but he's scared to death of COVID and the last time we had him on the phone, he didn't understand you to begin with, so we'll just do the best we can as far as anything that needs to be presented back to him. Shannon and I will do that and get back to you as soon as possible on any of those questions that Mr. Robson has answered. Right now, it looks like it's ready to move forward on when you want to implement this and how do you want to implement it.
Questions or comments? I'll stop with Commissioner Cox. Do you have anything?
Well, I had requested additional information about how many employees it would affect and how many might are in any, you know, if we did the minimum, I guess, how many employees were already there. And so that was good information, but like I said, it's hard for me to see it on this computer right now, but I do know the synopsis of it, which I could hear Julia explaining earlier, that it would, that 170 of the 329 employees would not get anything if we brought it to the minimum and it would, 159 would receive an increase. That's just kind of a question that I had and, you know, I do think something needs to be done. I do think it's past time that we implemented something that would, I can go back to my years of being on the school board and Ronnie can attest to this too, that we had, you know, a lot of times a high turnover rate because the pay was low and, and one thing that this says is that the cost of replacing a fully trained and functioning employee is two to three times that employee's annual salary. And I think that's something that we have to be cognizant of and think about is, you know, it might seem like a lot to implement it, but also it costs a lot to replace good employees once they're trained and they're, you know, doing their job and they're good at their job and then they go somewhere else just because they can make more money and that happens a lot. So, I would like to see us move on this fairly quickly. I don't know, because I'm new with this, how it's going to affect the budget and the budget plan. We're going to, if it's better to wait, do we have a budget planning to implement this in the next budget or, or how that works, but y'all can tell me more about that.
More questions, comments? Go ahead, Bonnie, if you, if you have yours.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I looked over this and I also have, I think one thing that really I've tried to concentrate on is how long we have been dealing with this. So I asked for some dates of when we actually started talking about the salary study. And I had them printed off for me and this is our 13th time we have discussed this. The first time was February 12, 2018 and it says salary study was tabled. December 10, 2018, discussed for the first time since it was tabled on February 12. January 24, 2019, it was discussed at a budget goals meeting as a top priority for all commissioners. February 18, 2019, it was discussed in RFP for the salary study. March 11, 2019, draft RFP presented for the salary study. March 25, 2019, RFP for the salary study was approved. After this meeting, RFPs were sent out. July 8, 2019, five proposals were presented from the Archer Company, Vacaterio, McGrath, Mercer Company, and PTRC. July 22, 2019, the Mercer Group was selected to complete the salary study. August 24, 2020, draft report of the salary study was presented. August, October 26, 2020, updated draft report presented moved to the budget review meeting on November 16. At our, at our November 16, 2020 meeting, the salary study was moved to the meeting on December 28, 2020. It took me a while to read all that off, but my purpose for reading that off was how long we have been in this process, Mr. Chairman. My first date, if you remember, I read off the salary study being tabled was February 12, 2018. We, our next meeting will be 2021. Our first meeting in January will be 2021. So that shows you how much this has been discussed, how many times we've gone over it. We got the company, an independent company, to come in and do the study, the Mercer Group. They have presented their information to us and now we're going into 2021, January 2021, and from the best of my adding that up, that's almost three years. That's two years and 11 months coming January, my, my calculation. I, I've been on here, this is my fifth year as the commissioner. I, I have not, I've not gone this far, almost three years on any project before we made any kind of move. So, you know, I've looked over this as Ms. Cox discussed, looked over the amount of money that it will take. I know when I was superintendent for five years, I usually started my budget process around the first of January. I don't know, I'm going to ask our county manager, Ms. Oakley, Ms. Oakley, when do you usually start working on your budget?
We start thinking about it very heavily in January.
January also.
February is, we play with it.
Okay, so you also start thinking about it in January and that's what I did as a superintendent. I would start sending out capital request to all principals and getting information from them and start to work at that time. And our next meeting's in January. This is it for 2020. We haven't done more meetings and we're going to be through this coming into January. We're going to be three years into this, three whole years. I think it's time to move on it. I think it's time to move. And when I say move, I'm talking about going to the minimum that Julia had in here. I think it was, what was it, Julia, 500 and?
With the contract, I think it was 526,000.
Thirty-nine dollars and 44 cents. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman. I might have some more comments later on.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've, I've been doing some fairly serious analysis of this and I've completed that. And so I've got a set of questions and observations that I want to read tonight just to get in the record and then I'll share this with the rest of the board. I'll send it to Shannon to distribute to anybody who wants it. I think once I get this set of questions and observations addressed by the board, then I'm, I'm ready to approve the plan itself. And so let me just go, and plus, I hope this will be useful to, to new commissioners to kind of bring them up to speed on this thing a little quicker since they hadn't had all the luxury of all that time that was just described to study this like the rest of us.
Red, I didn't mean to say that long.
So let me just go through my questions and observations right quick and, and really I don't need answers to these tonight. If, if we could get them answered maybe by the next meeting before we approve it or in between now and the next meeting just for the benefit of all the other board members, I think it might help us kind of finalize it. My first question was, do we need to deal with any positions in the county that could not be benchmarked in the salary study? And that question is based on a comment he made in the report that he could only do ones that could be benchmarked. So if there's any outside of that, I'd just be curious about how we deal with them. The second question, the hiring recommendation calls for hiring up to the midpoint if qualifications warrant it. Is this the process that we're currently using with the county manager approval required? So if, if this is not the way we're doing it now, maybe tell me what, how we're doing it now so I can compare the two whenever you do hiring recommendations and set the, set the salary for new employees. Because that's, it seems to me this is sort of the way we were doing it when I was here or something, kind of like this here.
They went to minimum.
Well, I don't know necessarily where they went to, but this is kind of how you analyze it. You looked at their experience and, and education and all that and, and so some people were hired above the minimum. So if, if that's kind of what we're doing here, then that's fine, fine with me, but however y'all want to address it, just answer the question and then we'll, whenever we'll, we get back together, we can talk about it. Number three, I'd like to see the process for creating and reclassifying positions as recommended in the study incorporated into the county's policy and to have that documentation submitted as justification to the commissioners in the county manager's budget proposal. So what I'm saying there is he goes through a process of how he recommends that we create new positions and do reclassifications in the future. And so I would say just, just use that, that guidance as, you know, to submit to us for justification whenever the departments or the county manager are trying to get a new position or a reclassification approved. On non-classified positions, non-classified positions addressed in the study show the Economic Development Director is a contract position working at will for the Board of County Commissioners. Was this changed after I departed as county manager? Normally it is under a county manager unless there's an Economic Development Council or a corporation like, for example, the one in Yadkin County. And personally, it doesn't matter to me either way how the board wants to do that. It's, some people don't like working directly for elected officials. They like to have that little buffer in between, but so however, whichever way the board wants to do that's fine with me. On the, the fifth question, does our board need to develop a new policy to consistently determine salaries for non-classified employees such as county manager and elected officials? And it says, and, you know, they didn't address that in the studies. It says, you know, we're going to do those separately. So if we're going to do those separately, then, which I think is perfectly appropriate, we probably need some kind of a written policy on how we're going to do it so that we do administer it consistently between those type of employees. On number six, on turnover, I would like to see a precise process of measuring personnel turnover and the reasons people leave. This data will help us implement and maintain the appropriate salary levels in the county. And I would, and Sonya's already made a comment on this, but I would remind everyone that it takes two to three times an employee's annual salary to replace a fully trained, functioning employee, as was noted and further verified in the salary study that was given to us. Number seven is how and when will draft policy be available on moving employees through the pay range as recommended in section F of the study? I think multiple criteria, including employee performance, should at least be considered. If we did that, this would then introduce merit pay into the county's salary process, which has not been there since I've been associated with the county. I don't know if it was there before at any time, but also, and will, also will a new salary schedule document be needed with this salary plan? And what I'm talking about there is this thing. This one. So do we have to, the question is just, do we have to do a new one of those?
Yes.
You will? Okay. Will that be hard or easy to do?
No, it's in his plan. Well, it's, it don't have the AB. It will have the AB. He don't have the one, two, the AB.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, that's my question. I mean, is what's in his plan sufficient or do we have to add to it?
What's in his plan allows you to do within a 30-year span of, of, of.
Okay.
He could create that document just to be able to see the 2% increases that he's recommended every, between the positions.
Yeah.
Sheer longevity.
Only if you need it, only if we need it. We don't.
It's a, it's a pretty simplified plan that requires a lot of the AB, how we have that other one scheduled.
Yeah, okay.
He could just do a percentage that he has recommended.
Okay. However y'all want to do it, I was just curious if we needed to have that as part of our new documents. Number seven is how and when will draft policy be available on moving employees through the pay range? Now, this one I just read, right? The next one, number eight, on the recommendation from the study in section G, and that's the part about the compression adjustment, will be made when funding is available. I think this decision would depend somewhat on what we decide to do in number seven that we just discussed on when to do a compression type payment, if we decide to do that or if we decide to do something other than that. On number nine, my ninth question is, on the funding options provided in our agenda, what percentage of our full-time employees would be impacted if we selected the option in our next budget of only bringing everyone to minimum? And I think you've already answered that. Whenever we were talking about the bonuses, I think it was at the last meeting, I had that same question of, you know, giving bonuses because there would be a certain number of people that may not be helped by this at all for another full year or so, or more. So that's the purpose of that question. And what was the number, 100 and?
It was 170 was the one that are above the minimum right now. It was one seventy was the one that are above the minimum right now.
Okay.
Fifty-nine, the ones that would go up some.
Hundred fifty-nine would go up.
Would go up.
Okay.
Out of the three hundred and twenty-nine, in the numbers. And that includes the contracted or...
Uh-huh. We'll have to kind of think about that, and about the people that don't get anything, I guess, as we discuss this further, during the first year. Also, could you get Mr. Robertson, Robinson, that's his name?
Robertson.
Robertson to, give me just a quick, a little bit better explanation of the last sentence in Section G of the, of his report. I'll just read it to you right quick for the record.
The one-time salary adjustment based on time in position, was that the one?
Yeah, this, the sentence I'm interested in says, this adjustment is normally referred to as a compression adjustment and identifies the same maximum percentage of the pay range that no employee will be placed beyond.
So I can tell what that means. So he was saying, if, I think this is right, you correct me if I'm wrong, what I thought earlier, right, seventy-five. He was saying that some counties will, let's say, you know, you have this number of dollars that you can put towards the compression longevity, like years in position, or, or if you would do, I think years in position would probably be the only way, because that's gonna be the less cost one, or so that years of service. So you might come to a point where you say, there are a few people in that that would receive a huge amount there, that you might want to set a maximum there of, say, seventy-five hundred or ten thousand. It would go compression based on years in position up to ten thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Saying that if you had somebody that had been in the same position for thirty-five years, they're gonna get strength in the maximum, might be potentially a forty thousand dollar increase on that one salary.
Oh, okay. So he's just saying cap it, without cap it.
Like, wanna put a cap on it if that helped in our situation in our county, just by looking at the numbers.
Affordability and stuff, okay.
That's what, that's what that means.
Okay, good. Okay, great. I just couldn't make, exactly understand it the way it was worded.
It's kind of the way it's worded.
And then the last, my last question is, could we, could our board get three examples, and this needs to come from Mr. Robertson as well, of actual questionnaires and application, and then the application of the factor evaluation system to the position to assist us as we review future requests using that same system for our addition of positions and reclassifications? And I would suggest that the three examples that he gives us, the one in the lower, one in the middle, and one in the upper level of the recommended plan. Then the only other thing, I had a couple of other observations. I think the salary study, I think the salary study got the levels about right as far as the salaries go, based on kind of my gut feeling from dealing with this for eight or nine years. I remember quite frequently we would lose social workers at a ten thousand dollar increase to surrounding counties. And I noticed in his analysis, I tried to compare his social worker three to our social worker three, and at the minimum, it was eleven thousand dollar increase. So that kind of tracks with my perception of what was going on. The, we also, I mean, every, the minimums especially, all went up a lot. I mean, they went up, the lowest ones I saw were like three thousand increases, and most of them were more like four, and then some of them were like the social worker thing a lot more than that. I didn't see as much variance in the high end of the maximum. Some of them, some of those, he actually recommended less than what we had for the maximum, but the maximum never mattered around here anyway, so.
That's the difference from that A B, though, actually is an attainable maximum.
Yeah.
Versus how it is now, where it's virtually impossible to get to it.
Yeah, so I think, you know, best I can tell, based on the data he used to compare it to, he pretty got it about right as far as those salaries from my observation.
He really was good about taking, he's been a little absent because of the COVID situation, but he really was good about spending things, giving us time to get with departments. We had a lot of department had input on, you know, we spent a lot of time sitting around with, making sure we had everything, helping us to be looking at it again, make sure it looks right to you. We trained social workers a lot, working with Stacy and all that, so that helped too, to be able to have that time, even if it takes thirteen minutes to do it. But just to get, just to get everybody's input from it, make sure they know best, they're everybody, they're running.
Exactly. Yeah, I think he said last time, I think I asked the question before, that he said it complied with all the state regulations now for health and DSS, so that needs to be true, but I think he said it was. And so then my last observation was, assuming the initial funding levels for the first year of the salary study implementation will be decided during the annual budget process, which was, we just mentioned earlier, when does the board want to formally approve the salary study? And I think I stated, I would be ready to do it at the next meeting if, with the answers to all these questions, if I can get those answered before then. And...
A couple of things I can answer now, if that helps, just for a few of them, I can't answer for Mr. Robertson's, but on the guidelines for the salary study implementation, as far as like moving through the scale. Gail has been working with a committee, set up with some different department heads, working on doing a new personnel update handbook. And I'm just ready to bring to the board, probably the first meeting in January. Ty will look at it too, make sure and make some changes. And this, the salary study part will be in there as far as recommendations on how to move through the new plan. So that'll be, that'll be coming to the board, probably the first meeting in January.
Well, all of the new policy related to the salary study, all be in that same document?
It'll be, yeah. They separated out just because we weren't sure on how this would be approved or not approved, and it's gonna be in the budget if you have them to say, we need to amend our current policy until the policy's updated. So maybe, just because it is such a large piece of it, it'll be part of it, a part of the larger document, but I'm sure it'll be part of a separate discussion as far as pieces on that that you all might wanna change or add to. But we've got pretty much a little guideline sort of already in place for it, it just seems to be ran through that committee.
Okay.
And talked about, and put back into that personnel policy. That is coming.
Oh, okay.
Because it's part of this deal, it kind of had to go hand in hand with it.
Yeah. Okay, good. Well, you know, I could approve his product here based on the addition of our new policy stuff that we have to put in to comply with it.
But the rest of them, I can look back over, if you give me a copy, we can get answers to, and I can get to him about the three examples of the questionnaires and all that.
I'll email this to you since we're done.
And as far as the employees that weren't in there, like the contract employees, were there other employees we were thinking of besides those, the economic development, I think you asked about? I don't think Phil had a real good basis for that one. I'm trying to figure out, and he said up some counties did contract with that position as well as the sheriff, the registered deeds and the county manager. The registered deeds and the sheriff would be more of just a compensation contract, because they're elected, so he didn't put them on a pay grade typically. But as far as economic development, he just didn't have a lot to compare it to. So Jake compared it to a lot of counties that do have a contracted position or have one on their pay scale, and try to kind of come up with a basis for that one.
Most of them I've seen are, it's under the county manager, but I hadn't looked at that many.
Right.
And, you know, some people consider it too risky to work directly for elected officials, they don't wanna do that. So I don't know whether, I don't know what's the, I don't know what the answer is, I don't really, it doesn't bother me either way. I mean, whatever, however you guys wanna recommend it, I'd be okay with that thing. But I mean, you know, some counties even have a completely separate, I mentioned it in here, economic development corporation that doesn't even, it's not even under the county, it's kind of cut out for independence, and I think Yadkin's had a lot of success with that. So, anyway, those were my thoughts on that. And I guess the last thing I'd say is, personally, you know, after studying this, I think he did a good job on it, and I'm satisfied with the methodology that was used, and like I said, with, I think he got the right results on the numbers. And I kind of like the simplicity of it, it doesn't seem overly complicated to take it in, and for us to be able to administer it in the future, so, so I think...
And on the figures that I have given the board, you know, I didn't know many, there wasn't gonna be a cap, so if, yeah, and a cap, you know, I could figure, I have all this on this spreadsheet, so, since I've got everybody in there now, it's not that complicated.
Like I'm saying, is what I thought we were gonna do is approve this plan and then just address this during a regular budget cycle, but if the board wants to do it differently, I'd be open to that too. And, well, what's this sheet you did, Julie? Would you explain this big sheet to us, what this is?
This is a sheet with all the positions.
Okay.
And it shows what grade they're on now and what's recommended, and then their current salary as of December the twenty-first, and then what the minimum is on the new grade, and then it would show the increase.
How long did it take you to do that? How long did it take you to do that?
Well, it's been a work in progress. It's been a mini version, mini version. I had to do it with Phil the first time, and then it's just been tweaking, changing people's, people's, um, he completed different positions.
I've seen you work a calculator, it took you fifteen minutes to put this together.
What's the area you highlighted in green? Did you say, what did that mean?
That, if you go by the years of service or the position, those are people that would be at the max of their scale.
Okay.
There's two people, if you go by the position, how long they've been in the position, and then there's seven, seven, if you go by years of service.
Okay. I'll study that later.
And these yellow things are stuff that Phil won't, I just didn't take the yellow off.
Oh, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Barney Cass, would you give everything I asked?
Commissioner Morse has some good questions there. Yeah, I've looked over this, and like I said, I don't see nothing out of range, but I also agree with Commissioner Bennett Hall, been doing this thing for three years. I mean, I think it's time to move forward, if the money's there, to give everybody a raise, I don't see a problem with it. Just keep doing the studies and not go nowhere, you know? But I did like Phil Rick's question there that he had about this, but I don't have no problem moving forward with it, you know?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I had one other thought I forgot to mention. I had, as I was working through this, I thought it might be good to set a separate meeting, a side budget discussion meeting, just to talk about this one topic, because we gotta, I mean, we could look at options other, options other than the ones that are proposed here, and get kind of timely, trying to figure out how the best way to afford it. So that's something the board would be interested in doing.
Yes. Some of y'all didn't say, we've been on this for a very long time, I think we done beat our heads against the wall right here, but most of us on here are going back and forth on this. As a business owner, I know what it's like to, whenever you lose somebody, it does cost you about triple, I believe Commissioner Morse had kind of touched on that point there earlier. And not only is it doing that, but it's also holding you up from production, getting down because that person, your head guy's trying to train somebody else and getting in these positions. And I do believe a lot of our employees have been impatient with us, I mean, been very patient with us. And I'd also like to see about us just going ahead and moving forward, getting ready to the minimum, and then maybe around budget time, seeing what we could do with this compression. Don't look like we'll be able to do the full thing here. I like what Mr. Robson had kind of recommended, putting maybe a cap on it. Did I hear you write some of them that's been here for a long time, you're talking like up to forty thousand?
Yeah, I mean, there's just like, like he was saying, if you picked a cap, whether the, whatever amount you thought you could afford, there's lots of people that would, it depends on how you did the compression, that would be a large increase. I think the largest one, Mr. Robson said, was forty. I think that was the one he used as an example. But there are some others that are, you know, twenty-five, so there's some, there's some relatively large, and you can see with this nice sheet that Julie's done with all those in there, there's some pretty large, large increases across the board, and they're just some of those are the larger ones.
And obviously, the way I see it right now, I just don't think I kind of could afford it when that kind of hit right there so fast, but...
As far as you sit back and have one budget work session where you can turn back to how much money you want to put in, the compression side, which is longevity.
Right.
You have, you have longevity, which is years of service that I have in. You've got compression, which is my time in this position. So I've been here thirty-five years, I've only been here three years.
Right.
So the compression is taking care of the three years. Now, if you've only got a million dollars you wanna spend on this, then you gonna have to just say, this is what we're doing, and we're gonna have to put a cap on it. If that's over thirty-five hundred dollars, sorry, but at least it'll keep you day, maybe one day, decide to bring it back to the, shit out, but right now, you could do it, you're doing all that you possibly can do without harming any other thing that you want to do.
All right. Thank you, sir. Honestly, I'd kind of like to see this thing, I mean, Commissioner Morse, I'd like to see some answers to your questions as well, I think you brought up some good topics, but I'd honestly like to see us right here on the next action agenda, at least getting people to the minimum. If the board is good with that. Go ahead, Commissioner Morse.
I don't think I'm good with that, and it's not, I'm not criticizing it, but, you know, I think, one of the thoughts I was having as I was analyzing this is, do we want our whole focus to be on getting everybody to the minimum immediately, and then ignoring the, how many hundred and something? Hundred and seventy people that are gonna have to wait another year? I mean, I think, I think we really need to think this through really, before we rush into it, because, you know, what if, and I'm just thinking out loud, it might be, might be stupid comment, but what if we, you know, took people partially to the minimum and then leave some money to, and it's like, get them to the minimum over two years, and then free up some money to move the others a little bit, or something like that? That's the, that's the only reason I want to at least think those things through, I don't have this answer.
Well, you said have another meeting for it, because it can get kind of lengthy right there, so.
If we get into that kind of discussion, then it'll take a whole meeting to figure it out, I think, at least, or...
And also, I'm actually open to that too, is there something, some meeting that we can put together before the next actual meeting at the second week in January to discuss
Talk about the second meeting in January?
That's one approach, we could approve this plan without having that meeting before. We could approve what he delivered to us, and still have that discussion slightly afterwards, even if we needed to, just, because that really moves into the implementation of the plan.
Even if, Commissioner Morse, I apologize for interrupting, but even with, if you approved it tonight, we were gonna request that you done nothing with salaries or any kind of funding until February the twentieth, then the first actual payment check that would receive the minimum increase, or whatever you done would be in March.
That would just be a, no, the March, the February twentieth would just be the start of another pay period that we're...
Yeah, if you please do it, it's starting with another pay period.
We have to, you wouldn't have time to do that.
You don't want to...
And we have got to get with soft work, kind of, and see how we got to change that.
Which allows us to bring the personnel policy in front of the board, and then review that and approve the necessary steps that we take place in that would reflect this new salary study.
Yeah. Well, I'd really like to hear, after you guys have had time to think about it, whether we are just gonna go lockstep with one of their recommendations, or maybe like to do a hybrid like I just suggested, or whether we should. I really don't, maybe get some feedback from employees on what they prefer, I'm not sure how the best way to figure that out, but...
It's a shame that we've got some employees that have been below the end of the scale. So to take this implementation of the minimum side, it gets a very large pay raise for them.
Yeah, when you move those people to minimum, some people are gonna get a big pay raise.
Yeah.
Really big. And other, everybody's gonna get a pretty good size one, I mean, everybody on there when you do minimum.
Well, and also, when you're looking at the people, it gets hard to separate people from positions, because you have our positions, but you gotta think about it in the position thing, which is hard, that somebody that had been here forever, you wanna get that compression part implemented, because they're always, they could retire, and you'd like for this to help them before they go out, or they've worked all those years in that same position, and it would be fair for them to be able to get something and benefit from it. That's where it gets a little tricky on trying to get them there, get the timeline right with it, and make sure it benefits them too, but you'll...
No, there's a lot of different ways you could do this, that's the problem. And he's given some good, solid, easy ones to do if we, if we, if, you know, I think we deserve, employees deserve us to really think this through, and try to do what's the fair, the most fair solution for everybody. And like I said... And like I said, I don't know what that is yet, but. Exactly, so.
Hey, Commissioner Cox.
Um, I'd say that, um, I think if, if we are just voting on approving the, the project or the, the, the document or the delivery of it, I could be fine with doing that at the next meeting on action, but like Rick said, I think we're gonna need more time to study how to best implement it. Um, you know, with the, looking at the budget and looking at how it affects some of, of the employees and, and others not so much and, and how to be fair to everyone. And that is gonna take some time. And I would be willing to, um, have just a meeting just about that if that would be beneficial to everybody when they were working a fair way to do it. If to really look at it in a separate meeting, I'm fine with that.
Maybe we could get Mr. Roberson's recommendation on that too. Yeah, he should have seen, seen this other places, so.
Line.
I think too, I, you can drop me on there.
I don't have any phone calls with him anymore of those.
That's hard.
This doesn't, it just doesn't work very well.
This is much better, but it doesn't work like that with him, but yeah, I mean, if you get him to recommend, if, I think if he kind of had a dollar amount of, if, if our board can meet and come up with saying you can put this much towards it, then that would help him to give you something like that. Say how he can divide that out and be fair and equitable. If he knew a dollar amount that he could or were willing to spend towards that. That's kind of what he's been asking us for the whole time. If you tell me a dollar amount, I could give you a little more implementation, you know, which.
Why don't you give us a easier question than that? I mean, I, one thing I want to understand when we try to come up with that dollar amount is I, I need to understand a little further this thing the auditors did to us. And see how that's gonna impact how much we can spend. So we'll talk about that at another time. Think whether the auditors changed the.
Insurance, but now it is the invoice. Yeah, you probably won't see a budget amendment coming through, start to come through because we've had some right large claims.
Well, does that, but you, you know what I'm talking about, with the one point four million or something that they made us do? So my question is, does that take one point four million away from what we have to work with? I mean, that's my bottom line question.
That nineteen percent is at the back.
Yeah, but that's got us down to nineteen percent.
Yeah.
And so, so in fact, it did come out.
Yeah, it's out.
So we ain't got as much, you know, we, we gonna talk about what fund balance we're gonna have along with this discussion then, I guess.
But at the same time, what we may lose, we may be gaining in other places. Is that not correct?
Could be, yeah, could be. I mean, so far we haven't had the deficit that we thought we might have for sales tax yet.
Exactly, yeah.
Still in time, but as of date of yet, it has not.
I think to do my quarter view.
We can take back.
As of December. I want to be looking closely at budgets and what people spent, what they hadn't spent in the past year.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's what we need to know that. That, we definitely need to know that to make that decision about how much we can fund here.
And you know, I pay money. If I see it.
You won't have as much this time because we cut those down. People were asking, I've had as much, but.
I'll be looking at the revenues also. We did with them, so.
We got all the talk.
Yeah, the sales tax is still a big question. I'm starting to think it's not gonna impact us that much this year, but then it could the next year. So I, I really don't, I don't have a grasp of how that's gonna come out at all. We don't have enough data to tell us yet either, so.
We are getting the internet sales tax now, so. Amazon and all that paying sales tax.
Oh, so is that where we're gonna make up some?
Well, I mean, it could. I mean, you know, they, our state was working on that with Amazon and the Wayfairs and all them.
Well, that's good.
And I know the Amazon deals we get here that we order stuff has sales tax on it.
Yeah, Kathleen's bothering us.
I'd say wait my pro force load there today. Yeah, should be a lot of tax money going here.
You know, the internet sales.
That might be good.
Cashly this year. You know, North Carolina was working on getting that taxed and I think they've gotten it.
Okay, that'd be good to know if, if that's the case.
I don't know how much, but people wanting to go on out shopping, they will be shopping online.
They're definitely, I met, I met the guy in the dark coming over here tonight and ordered something last Saturday afternoon. It was there before noon on Sunday. They don't care what day of the week it is or anything, so. Interesting.
That'll make a big difference, I think, yeah.
I hope so. Okay. I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything?
I want to know where we're at right now. What do we say we're gonna do?
Sounds like we're moving this part right here to action, but as far as discussion on how we're gonna do the raises, we're gonna have another talk about that. Am I correct on that? That's the way everybody was feeling?
Sonia suggested, I thinks.
We're gonna place this on action at the next meeting.
So we'd be approving the actual recommended plan from the Mercer Group and all like the grade sales and the amounts and all that would be approved at the next.
Right.
And then we'll schedule a, you want to try and schedule something? Or you want to get this approved first, get the questions answered, then schedule something for to just discuss implementation and all that after you see the personnel policy and all that.
What one is next meeting?
January eleventh.
Personnel policy now is gonna have several areas of, of adjustment to, just compensation.
Yeah.
A lot of areas that you, Ty said, need to be fixed on that day. So we went, they, we, uh, had a board and they went completely through their, their whole policy. We can hit that date and finally get it to where it's, uh, current with a, uh, situation, so. That's been big and parking on January, it's comfortable. So Ty's getting ready to see it. He'll do his legal work on it. After that, I hope to have it.
January.
Have January meeting.
You almost need to have this done by us before you update that though, don't you? I mean, how we're gonna do this or do you?
Well, the, to know that we're gonna use this plan helps some to change the recommended plan. And then as far as Gail and Julia and Jake and I have all said already and got a pretty good list for the implementation guidelines as far as moving to the scale and new hires and moving throughout the, if you change jobs, things like that. So we'll have a recommendation, but that, nothing, that personnel policy will be finalized until you all approve it. Then we'll be able to make changes then. So if we have that at the next meeting, that'll help for the implementation. So it might be better to, if the plan's approved at the next meeting, um, as well, and then schedule a meeting to discuss all the implementation part.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
And this can change, you know, think we get longevity between now, when it, you know, and two people within.
Won't change that much though.
No, but it could change, you know.
A little bit.
Okay, so we're going with the plan at our next meeting on action. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item C, the JCPC appointment request. Ms. Shaver.
So this is a request from the JCPC and it's to, well, she, I don't know what it is, it's, it's Rusty Slate. Um, he is leaving as the, there's different positions on that committee to where they have people in certain slots. Like I'm on that committee for instance, as the county manager office visiting me. So we had, Rusty was on as the chief court counselor visiting me, but he has retired. But he would still like to continue to serve and we don't have to be a CC appointee right now because that person resigned. So they're asking that he be appointed as that appointee so he can continue to serve on there. And he has well knowledge about the juvenile crime prevention council already, but just in a different role. So if, if the board was okay with that and wanted to recommend him for that, I could, um, advertise it after this meeting and put it back on next time for approval if nobody else had any other suggestions for that position.
Okay. Do I have to open a floor for any nomination on that?
Yeah, you can just open the floor for that and if somebody would, if it's okay with nominating Rusty and then we can, um,
Okay, I'll open a floor for any further nominations.
I nominate Rusty. I think he's the perfect person to do that.
Make an, uh, nominations be closed. I think we can go to after Rick has nominated Rusty anyway.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If you'd say aye.
Aye.
We'll just move that to action for a little bit. And I'll advertise that one.
All right, next the commissioner appointments to the boards and committees. Yep, sure has.
So what I've got on here is a list pretty much right now of all the current appointments. And if you see something on there that you don't know you're on or that I have wrong, please tell me. But I think I've got a list of things that you're currently serving on. And I know things are a little bit different right now with COVID and some committees are meeting virtually and some of them have not been meeting. Like I know, for instance, the Wabeti Planning and Evaluation Committee has not met since last March because Commissioner Yance, former commissioner, was on that, that committee and they were gonna appoint him with US's replacement, Commissioner Nicholson. And they've not met in, to do that yet. So that position's still sitting vacant. So that one needs to be filled when they do that. And then I've got the, um, the ones that Commissioner Walker was serving on that would need to be replaced. And then if there are any that currently that Commissioner Morris or Ben Hall or Nicholson are serving on that they don't think they continue serving on or, or some, or have a conflict or something that we've always talked about rotating it around them, but wanted to have to get in touch with them and kind of make those arrangements. But mainly is to get those ones for Commissioner Walker filled and Commissioner Lankford didn't have any this time because he was on such a short cycle of it. So it's really just those four. And I think, um, um, Vice Chair Cox had mentioned to me and maybe, um, she wants to speak about a couple that she might be interested in. When you get ready to talk about that.
Okay. Commissioner Cox says, uh, you want to go ahead and mention them once you're interested in?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I would be interested in taking Commissioner Walker, former Commissioner Walker's place on DSS board and the JCPC if that's okay with everybody else.
Commissioner Barney Castle, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Everybody else, is there any, uh, Commissioner Barney Castle, is there any, uh, boards or committees you said you'd like to serve on?
I can do the, um, Wabeti, sir.
I want the finance committee. Commissioner Morris, Commissioner Ben Hall, is there any boards that you wish to give up?
I'll just keep doing the ones I'm doing unless somebody dying to do one of them. They're all virtual. We're meeting virtually on all of them right now, so. Commissioner Ben Hall?
I'm, I'm good with mine and all, everything I'm doing now is virtual. I had four meetings last week and they were all virtual, so. Most of them are running for SITC right now. So I'm, I'm good with the Board of Trustees, if we went for SITC and the Stokes Partnership for Children. I'm good keeping those two.
Okay.
Would Wayne want to do the one that's vacant up there when they decide to fill it?
That's what I was gonna say, is anybody interested, they had, they had.
It meets at night, I think.
Yeah, they, they had Andy down as that one to take it, but they've not voted anybody in yet, so.
Planning an evaluation committee.
For that.
Yeah.
It's the Wabeti Planning and Evaluation Committee, yeah.
You want to do that one too?
That's fine.
Okay.
That you're doing the other one.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's right.
And I'll send you, I've got their meeting schedule. I may have sent that to you all with the vacant seat, but I'll send it, make, it's got when they need and who's on those boards for those, for them. And they're all, they, it's happened to meet at all, but the other one's been virtual.
And the contact person.
Yeah, and I'll send you her, Kathy. Yep, I'll send you her information too. And I'll send her yours.
All of mine you can either do by phone or computer, whichever you're in the mood for, so.
And we'll, um, we'll finalize, um, those at the next meeting.
Okay.
On action, if that's a.
And Shane, if you don't mind, kind of check into the, uh, Cardinal County Commissioner Advisory Board.
Uh huh.
Uh, like I was put on it when we first, when I was first elected to the board, I never heard anything from them.
Well, probably because they send you emails in a secure format that you probably think, what's this? It says Postmaster when you get it. And since Rhonda Outlaw left, she sent me a normal email and I've asked them and asked them to change that and they, they just haven't. And it's real hard to recognize them as an email when they come through to you. Um, but Reggie Thornburg, has, has he ever contacted you? I think I've copied you maybe before and sent you forwarded things from him. But I'll, I'll ask them and see. And I don't think they've been meeting a lot either.
Okay.
If they have been meeting at all, but I'll, I'll check into it for you and see.
So is everybody good with that? All right, move on.
Okay, and I'll, we'll find a lot of this next meeting, so.
All right. I am me, the proposed resolution adopting the Yakkin Valley Regional Bicycle Plan. Mr. Oakley.
Chairman, board members, this is a, uh, resolution by the Yakkin Valley Regional Bicycle Plan. It, it is for the four or five county reg, uh, counties that's in our area, whereas it promotes bicycle bike, bike safety. In our area, as our Stokes County is part of, because we have a lot of bicycle people love. So, uh, it's for a, uh, this resolution is for Surrey County, Stokes County, Site County, Yakkin, Aradale and David County. It, it is promoting the safety and health of bicycle biking. And they are re, uh, requesting that the board, uh, be a part of this resolution by adopting it. And saying that they agree with it. And also support of this resolution does not replace or do any existing plans we may have if we do have them. That all of that, rather it indicates the willingness and support of the recommended biking projects that could be or need to be. So this is, uh, just a resolution that I would recommend that, uh, that y'all would promote just for the help and the well-being of, uh, the citizens that wants to pass through Stokes County on two ways.
And include motorcycles too.
Bicycle.
Leg motors.
Andy?
You gotta paddle your way through on this one.
That takes Jimmy out of it, so. Any questions, Academy, Tony?
I, I would just say, um, I'm in complete support of this. I can tell you bicyclists, I'm on Flashhalls Road and they use that road to get to Hanging Rock. And they cut through Mountain Road, back up eighty-nine, going up to Hanging Rock. And every weekend in the spring and summer, once it warms up, Saturday or Sunday one, there's, and it's not one or two people, it's groups of thirty to forty people in a group coming by. Not only do we need to, uh, take in this just for their safety and everything, but also, I mean, I see it as an economic gain also. I just want to throw that out there.
Uh, you know, y'all, y'all have me and Will out there. Will and I, we already went to the highway division and, uh, talked about bike lanes in this county and really it worked out because they just did have the funding, but, uh, we would hope one day that they would take Stokes County in, uh, consideration of, uh, the funds here for bike lanes. Because I think you really do need to have up around this mountain area here.
That's your eighty-nine. Any more questions, Academy, Tony?
No, I'm good.
All right. Jake, is there any kind of rush on this? Can you just be? All right, sounds good. Moving on to IMF, Wanaco Planning Board ETJ member appointment request.
That's a request from town manager Wanaco, Kim Greenwood, to add Greg LaRoche to their ETJ member. There's a, several months back, you all voted to add someone for them, but that person has not yet attended a meeting. So he needs somebody that's willing to come to the meeting and this gentleman has, has filled out an application, wants to do that. So he's asking that you all do him a favor of appointing Greg LaRoche to the, he is an ETJ member of the Wanaco Planning Board.
Is this the same one as, do we have to do nominations on it?
The board ones are different, but for, for this one, you'll have to just open the floor and then I'll, we'll move it to next time.
That mean we're unappointing the other guy too?
Um, yeah, pretty much sort of replace. It's, it's, Ms. Pearson, I think was her name, um, and has not yet attended one meeting. They have had quorums for a few of their meetings, as they should say. Yeah, so this'll, this'll take care of that.
All right, I'll open the floor for any further nominations.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Any discussion? If you'd say aye.
Aye.
Move on to our action agenda. First, a fire commissioner appointment request. At the last meeting, Stephen, uh, Robinson was nominated to serve as a fire commissioner, replace current commissioner, Mr. Wayne Barney Castle. Uh, this has been advertised. I'll open a floor for any further nominations. There's no further nominations. I need a motion to close. Any discussion? If you'd say aye.
Aye.
And then I'll pull the board, starting with Commissioner Cox.
Yes, I was in favor.
Say, Robinson, say Robinson.
Say Robinson.
What did you say?
You say Robertson.
See Robertson.
Yes, see Robertson. Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
Robertson.
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 Yeah.
All right. I'll move on to item B, the policy for fire commission and use of service district funds. Have a motion on this?
I should approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Item C, the Parkdale America repeal, appeal. Have a motion on this?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. If there's nothing further, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.